Bob, we've discussed this in the past, and you've been voting no for a while. The reason you've been voting no is because we don't have fund balances, correct? And we still don't have fund balances.
And I do appreciate Donna, the pay stubs and some stuff we used to have, but as a matter of principle, when we get to where we should be, I will...
I think you'll have those next week.
I talked to Ted Nelson today, and he's thought we'd have them by the next meeting as well. I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion made by McBurn to approve the consent agenda. I have any seconds?
I would just say until we get to the balances, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving the pay, not knowing where the money's coming from, or if we have the money to pay those. So that's why I wasn't going to vote long with Bob to not do that.
And one D, appointment of city clerk. Mary here with us tonight. We need a motion to appoint Mary as city clerk.
I'll make the motion to appoint Mary Marholz as city clerk.
Motion by Lefler and seconded by McBurn to appoint Mary as city clerk. Vote all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor, motion carried. And appointment of mayor pro 10. I would like to forget that we appoint Jason Myers as mayor pro 10 if it's two more dollars. Any motion for that? I'd like a motion to appoint Jason Myers as mayor pro 10.
I will make a motion to appoint Jason Myers as mayor pro 10.
Motion made by Chisman, seconded by McBurn to appoint Jason Myers as mayor pro 10. All in favor?
Aye.
All approved?
Nay. And it's nothing personal, Jason, it's just...
Just reducing himself a little.
Okay. I just want, I mean, you have served as mayor and resigned. I don't know why at this, if I knew, we'd need to sit down and discuss, I guess, why you resigned before, in case something were to happen to Bill, and you do have experience.
As health issues.
As health issues.
Three, three eighths. Four eighths, four eighths and one eighth.
Okay, so we have...
Three to one.
Three eighths. One eighth and three two.
It's technically three to two.
Okay. Not where I understand from the way.
If I exempt myself from the vote, it's a...
Yeah, I'm just pushing on sale of three eleven hickory. Three ten hickory, what that could be.
What's going on with that? What's going on with that?
Well, this, the three, three eleven is the other one. Three ten is the... And the main thing, I did have an offer on it. I just wanted input from you guys on whether we ought to accept it.
That is actually one thing, real estate is one thing we need to, uh, close session to discuss.
Put that table to high till we... All I need to find out more about anyhow, they go to attorney, because they've got all the...
And that's going to be my suggestion, maybe we need to find all the legalities out so we don't miss step when we do sell it.
I agree. Need a motion to just table this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Myers, seconded by Chisman to table the sale of hickory tree. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor?
This is a house, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. And just the house, not the property behind it?
And that citizen complaint. Tina Walker, she got a complaint of... And it says four sheep in the yard. And lots of barking dogs and Donnie Denham in it. And some of them went and looked it over. What do you...
What I saw was bottle lambs. And I guess, from what I know about, they should be weaned in a short order. And maybe that's the time to, good time to give them weaned or whatever. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but...
I was discussing with Donna, I've got, every fifteen sent me the most current ordinance city code book. And there's nothing in there that states anything about which we need to probably go through. Nothing about livestock or farm animals in there at all. It's got about dangerous animals, dogs, and it's a violation of the noise ordinance. And like Donna said, she thought it was a state. It was a state law. But, I mean, until we find out what the state law is, we go... I mean, I recommend that we just go talk to Donnie and ask him how long they're planning on being there, if he's going to get rid of them, and take them out to his pharmacy. And I don't know if that falls on... Do I have to go talk to him?
I do believe in the 2005 code book, there is something in there about farm animals and livestock.
And I thought it was in the 2005 too, but this, the 2017 doesn't have anything in it.
Well, 2017 is a mere shadow of the 2005.
Right, and I agree.
That is lacking a lot of information for some reason.
And that's what I saw.
And I looked at the 2005, the section with the animals in it is gone for some reason.
At one time, there were people had milk cows in town. I'm not saying we want to go back there.
Well, the last time I seen it, it said any livestock and breeding chickens cannot be within fifty feet of a residence. That was the last ordinance I seen. And where it's at now, who knows? But it should be in the new book.
And you would think it would be in the new book, because that would just, I mean, it shouldn't ever be anything taken out, it should just be added to.
That's right. And for some reason, there's been information taken out.
But was this one, when was this ordinance code, codefied? So you said, did we approve it this year?
Exactly.
Has it been approved?
That's my question. It has been approved, so we need to start going back and going through everything to make sure.
I think, and I'm not, but I'm not certain, Jason, I think in the closet in there, there might be a couple of the old code books like you're talking about. After the meeting, I'll look in there.
They have a 15 that haven't merged the two. I mean...
They should have the master of the 2005. They should have had it to make this one.
It used to be, there was copies of some of the code books at the library.
There's still one, they have the current one down there from 2017.
They did have the past one. Could I talk to Buddy if he wants to visit him now? Being a former mayor, there was a deal with the horses years ago. I remember you told me the time they had horses in Atama. Was it because of your grandfather, Dan, or do you remember the outcome of that?
Well, lawyer that humans had outweighed the lawyer the cities had. Humans kept the horses. When you're talking about your ordinance book from 2005, I think you're just, you're just talking because you got to go with the current one. Whatever it is, if there's nothing there about animals, let her leave that guy alone.
Yeah, right now, we have to go with what we got.
If you don't, you're going to have a problem.
Unless there's something in Iowa code.
And I'm not sure this 2017 doesn't have some issues with it, to be honest.
The people that's up there was there when that was made, right? Well... Should have looked it over.
When was it recodified? When was it approved?
This last year, wasn't it? Didn't we approve that? Recently, we approved it, I'll put it that way.
I think it needs to be...
Now, I know, there's some things, I shouldn't say I know, I need to ask the league of cities, but I think there's some things that we need in there we don't have. We're going to have to figure out how to do it properly to put them in, so...
That's why you're supposed to all kind of do it together with your lawyer.
And I didn't, it didn't go that way this time, but certainly take that under advisement, I think.
Well, the city attorney at one time, not the one we have now, but the previous attorney, was supposed to be doing all that. Well, she ended up not doing it, and it got left in limbo.
Who's supposed to read it all? Who's supposed to check?
Then there are you people. The council is, yeah, at the time.
Yeah, did you?
No. I wasn't on council then, so I couldn't tell you.
Did you do the mayor or any time?
Not when they got recodified.
Well, it's not your problem, but I think there is something up there.
In 2015, I believe, a letter was sent out by the area, because that's what I, when I contacted, I got the data to see if there was anything, because that's what I was checking on specifically. I don't know, was that one recodified in 2015?
Nope.
And it was not. And you have to recodify every five years, correct?
And then...
And before that, it hadn't been done since...
2005 was the last time. But yeah, as far as, like Buddy advised, I would say if it's not in our book, then...
No, you have to go with what we have right now.
The only thing that it could be, like I said, barking dogs, is the noise ordinance, and I would, I mean, who goes and talks to him? Does the mayor go, the mayor go ask him, hey, keep your dogs in, or keep your sheep quiet? How long is sheep going to be there? If it continues to be, then we go find them? What does, how does the ordinance read? I mean, do we got time to look it up?
I don't know, I don't live much farther than what the complaint does, and I never really am. I mean, the dog, I hear the goats. I hear the goats wanting to do the dog.
So I mean, I think just some communication, somebody wanting to ask him, is this going to continue to be an issue, or is it something that's going to be resolved? Are you going to take your sheep back to the farm? Or go a long way, just a simple conversation.
You know, that's what needs to be done.
I think a simple conversation to begin was, it's just a lot less hassle for everybody. You don't want to crucify the guy.
No, so if we...
Thank you. If she gets disdinking.
Yeah. Something needs to go and just find out. Would that be the mayor's, let her do job? They'll go talk to him?
I would do that.
Okay. And I think that's what we need to do then, just go talk to Donna and just, and find out if that's going to continue to be an issue, and if it is, um... But you know, that a noise complaint would be the, I'd have to look and see what a fine is for a noise complaint, but that would be the only thing that he could be fined for, because he couldn't be fined for having sheep. Unless it's a state code issue.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Along with that ordinance and stuff like that, is there like a timeframe that the council has to, you know, like a verbal warning or a written warning? Is there anything written or a, uh, agenda type thing that you have to follow?
I mean, like a thirty day...
Yeah, something like, I just wasn't sure. I mean, obviously, I think it's a great idea that, because conversation does go a long way to sit there. It, they could be something that he brought from, because he works for DARP, the vet, so it could be something that he brought from the vet that he's working on at home, instead of having it the vet, and it's just a short-term deal, and that'd be all good and taken care of. But again, the conversation would bring that up. But I didn't know if it goes beyond the conversation, and it still is becoming an issue, or still is concerned or complaint, if there's a, uh, protocol that you have to follow.
And under animal control here, it just says, it states that, uh, an animal nuisance that causes disturbance by excessive barking or other noise-making, chase of vehicles, molest or attack or interfere with a person or other domestic animals, and that's listed under the code of violence. And that's the only thing it states about as far as noise goes. And according to this, there is no, doesn't show in that section of the city code what the proper procedure is. Yeah. That doesn't read...
And I guess too, in the conversation, if dogs are involved, you might suggest that he get the dog tags?
Yes, that would be the first thing I would find out, is if he's got the milk tags, which I have a doubt he probably didn't.
That's, I would guess, a majority of dogs in town are not properly vaccinated.
We come up and we got our dog tags, and the next year, we were like four numbers off from the years, tag number the year before, Donna and I laughed, laughed, was like, okay, not a lot of people do that. And it's only two bucks.
Yeah, it is, only two bucks.
Well, it's Araby's vaccine, vaccination is what the...
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure his dogs are probably all taken care of.
Yeah, because to have the, to get the two dollar permit, you have to bring a copy of your Araby's.
Your up-to-date shot record, yes.
Well, I, I don't know, I get my feeling on the thing, is if, like Bob says, did he use their bottle lambs?
Yeah, they're small.
Well, as far as the lambs, that's a no, no, there's no, nothing to do about that. So there's nothing in the code book about it. So the lambs is a non-issue.
Just being noise.
It's just a noise thing.
Well, what I'm saying, maybe we need to look at an amount of time for him to remedy that noise situation.
Oh, well, it's just a simple thing.
That's what we're talking about, just making a conversation, and then we'll find out and see where we have to move forward.
Just had a complaint, you know, about dog barking.
There's other dogs close proximity there. I mean, I don't live there, so I don't know whose dogs are barking, I don't get into that. There are other dogs in that neighborhood. Have no...
Well, Bob, I think you've got one down. Judy had one that got into that vacant house that's next to her cornered coon or something up in that house, and then the dog couldn't find his way back out, and just barked and barked and barked, drove Judy nuts. So I mean...
I'll go, I'll go with Donnie, see what we can... Now, we got any old business?
Plumber. Plumber. I got all the information for my way through, all this bonding, insurance, everything.
It's not up here.
I, well, I know that's one. I have an email address to send it to you. And then it needs to be on the agenda to approve.
You're right.
And I hate to keep beating an old drum, but we, uh... Part of the reason I got the ordinance book was part of the reason, and there's a lot of people that have come to me, and I know that, I think there's some people in the crowd that like to discuss the water bill issue, billing issue, and past due amounts. And the fact that it appears that we're doing nothing to get people current. And get them, granted, when we went two months without getting bills sent out because of the program issue or whatever, that was hard, but if they're still, I mean, if we got... The sheet I bought last time was as of November of last year, we're eleven thousand, and people just knocking. And have we sent thirty-day notices out that they're delinquent thirty or sixty days, or three hundred and sixty-five days, or how far delinquent they are?
Thirty and sixty days rings about a...
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, I think there's, there's some that have gone a lot farther than that, and we've still, the council, not done a whole lot as far as, is getting people up to date.
Is it still printed on the bill that says after two months? There used to be something...
Never the point.
There is, but according to the attorney, that's not enough. You have to, and according to the code, you have to give out a notice.
Jason, in that new code, it, I've read it, I, I got no problem with all the way it reads. The new code you've got specifies the day your order goes out, the billing procedure, the, you know, when the notices go out and disconnect. It's all, it's all spelled out on it, and I think it's all the code. I got no problem at all with the way it reads. That's what I'm trying to find that on, because it was... I think it's one thirty-nine page, but we're in stars.
Yeah. And it was, uh, also in, in the code book as it was presented or codified, if this was passed, it was not correctly, um, when I sat on the council in 2011, early 2011, it was set, the billing was set that we would pay fourteen forty for your first thousand gallons and five ninety-five for each additional thousand gallons. The sewer rate was seventy percent of the water rate, which was ten dollars and eight cents for your first thousand, and three ninety-seven for every thousand after that. The ordinance, as it reads in the code book, which is not accurate, I was trying to find that. It was, it states that it's fourteen forty for the first three thousand gallons and five ninety-five for each additional.
I had it wrong.
That, that is wrong, wrong, wrong.
Yes, that is wrong.
But if that was in the...
Was even corrected in the master book, it was corrected.
The current code book that shows, this is the 2017 code book, it reads, it reads fourteen ninety-five, or fourteen forty, excuse me, I'm trying to find it, trying to bring it up. But it, it reads wrong. And, I mean, there's a lot of people that if that's the way it reads, we've charged them wrong for quite some time. At least since that was codified, um, which we know it's wrong. I mean, I know it's wrong, I know we approved the rate increase and what it read, how it read before. I don't know, that opens us up to all kinds of litigation. I mean, uh, what do we do? Do we go back and re-codify this to get it up to the way it currently, the way it should read? The way it was approved?
There's another section, I can't tell you exactly what, but it had the money amount blank. And that might be a good league, I have a league of cities question, is what do we do and how do we go about it?
Because of it, it does, it says fourteen, three thousand gallons, fourteen forty, and it skips about three lines, and it says each additional, each additional thousand gallons, five ninety-five.
But there was another section, had something similar, it wasn't water, and it just had a blank there. So I assume they did that so they could adjust it. And I'll try to find that so I can prove that it's there. I wish I could find this right now.
The water in general needs, it's something that we've got to be addressed. It's got to be addressed. And it's got to, I mean, it's something, uh, I talked to a former mayor today that had the... When we approved that rate increase, we talked to the Iowa, Iowa Rural Water Association, they come in and did a free, it's a free service, they come in, they go through the books, and they tell you exactly what your rate should be for the debt that you have. It's free. For us to not have, bring somebody in to look it over, that's not, charge us anything, and tell us where we need to be. But I'm afraid that we're still way, way under where we need to be, as far as to pay off the debts that we have with the...
Yeah, the sewer rates go, or there needs to be a limit to that rate. That needs to come up to pay for the new one that was made. And that hasn't been adjusted yet.
We're scratching raise our purchase price of water, what, first July, in that line of fact?
Did they?
So we need, I mean, that's something that we need to get on. If I could get a phone number for you, we need to get on it, I would say immediately. Popping on Mary's new duties when she gets in here, but that's something that we, it has to be done. I mean, we're, the, the water sewer debt's kind of out of hand, from talking to Ted. I'm flipping through this, trying to find that, I had it bookmarked. But, I mean, and it, it goes back to negligence in previous administrations, that we haven't shut people off for so long, but we gotta, we have to start either collecting from those people or getting them shut off somehow. I mean, this is, we can't let them keep using, especially if the water rates for the city went up. Right, Bob, correct? I mean, if the rates for the city went up in July, then we've got to start bringing that revenue in. Because it seems like we've been pushing a lot of revenue out, but we haven't been bringing revenue in that we need to be bringing.
Jason, I was wondering if Kim could speak, because this is old news. This not even really has to do with the price that you guys are charging.
Correct.
It's basically what's happening to us, in our opinion, it looks like.
I guess I just have a quick question, as to who decided on my bill that I would be charged twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six gallons of water in the past two months?
I did.
And why? Why did you decide to charge me that?
Who you read and met it, and I'll tell you. We had a meter reading done. Your water bill has been estimated for ten months. We had a meeting, we had a reading done, and when it was calculated, that's what it showed. Does your bill have a note I was asking you to please call me?
Yeah, and you know what's funny? If you call, you're only here for two hours. So you are telling me that these are the numbers that are on my meter?
Those are the numbers that I was given. I do not read your meter.
Those numbers have never correlated with my meter.
Then it is your responsibility to let us know that the difference...
Consider this me letting you guys know, and along with the WOLO or the...
Attorney general.
Attorney general.
Our meter is forty-two thousand gallons lower than that.
Than what we're being billed. And I have let you know.
Call me in town. Then why do not call me and tell me?
I have left notes with my payment, and I'm sorry, but you guys should be, you guys should be competent and not to do this.
That I'm trying to straighten out.
No, I have left notes with it, saying, you know, I had estimated for twelve months at five thousand, one hundred and twenty-four gallons.
We've been paying way too much a year ago.
This is nothing from my meter, nothing. And are you going to call me after estimating for twelve months?
Okay, I'm not going to discuss it because you're not giving anybody else a chance to speak.
I've got on my bills, if you guys would like to see.
I'm not doubting you a bit. What I need from you... Is cooperation to tell me what exactly your meter reads.
It's in a note.
So that we may have our city man go check it out.
You have it in writing now.
Okay, fine. We'll, we'll take a look at it.
But I will not pay a bill until you guys are competent enough to get a correct one out. On top of that, this bill...
We are not incompetent. Your meter is inside your house, is it not?
No, it is not.
It's outside.
And...
Are you certain?
Yeah.
Where's he reading your meter then?
Probably outside.
Okay.
Off his walk.
Because I can show you where he wrote your reading down. I can show you on the computer how it was calculated. I didn't just make up a number and plug it in.
I got a picture of my meter, and I have him taking pictures on my meter.
And she left notes all last year.
She may have left notes all last year, sir, but I was not here all last year to get those notes.
Is it logical that after a year of it being estimated, that the first time he reads it, it is the exact same number as the last bill that was estimated?
I can't speak to that. I don't read them.
It don't look like it was read.
Mm-hmm.
Mine isn't.
Mm-hmm.
Well, part of the problem is, is for the last year, we've had a clerk that was, quite frankly, extremely incompetent.
Don't like the city council?
And, uh... Now that we have a new city clerk, I feel that a lot of these issues are going to start getting taken care of correctly. Donna has been, has stepped in to help without any pay. So I do thank her for doing that. The water bill's already flipping mess, and I'll tell you that too. Mine's a mess. Everybody's is a mess.
I've actually heard that a lot of people haven't paid theirs, so I was kind of hesitant. That, you know, the ones that pay, actually, that's what Brian Morgan, the county supervisor, said it sounded like to him, was that those who pay their water bills are taking up the slack for the others.
That ain't right, because the program that it goes through is not even our program. It's a program we pay for out of Omaha.
Yeah, I don't believe how it could get so screwed up here if it's...
Well, like I said, it's up to whoever the person was at the time inputting the numbers. And whatever was done beforehand, I can attest to because I have no clue.
I think kind of what they're saying, though, is if we're eleven thousand dollars in the arrears for water bills, and we don't recoup that...
Yeah.
It will be everybody else's, gonna have to pay.
Well, it feels like they're recouping it off somebody who has a nice table on my house, because most of the people that are delinquent who don't pay their bills, they have no worries.
Thing is, is people point fingers at people who have no idea who is delinquent, who isn't. Because if you do know who delinquent is, then that's illegal.
Yeah. How do you go, how do you, uh... We were told that it's public, we could get the accounts and addresses of the delinquent.
That's not, that's not legal anymore. Now, you can get...
That changed about three years ago.
That is the only...
You can get a number of how many?
Get the numbers.
You can get a number and a number of the total.
So you can sit on even like the city council and be delinquent, and no one knows that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Look, the problem is getting to me, and we're sitting here tonight, we're turning into Mountain Union. It's that simple. The mayor of Mountain Union, I read one of his, a deal in here, and he said people that know one another all their life couldn't even talk to one another on the street. Because one guy wasn't paying a bill, and the other guy wasn't, and they ended up going down a tube, and I really don't want to see that happen here. I think we're over the, I, I don't know what I think right now. I think we're done. My personal opinion, but maybe we pulled it out of the hole, but man, we got, we gotta get a handle on this stuff. I mean, look at us tonight. This, this has got to change.
That's the goal with hiring a new clerk.
And we're putting a lot of stuff on the last city clerk. When was she hired? Was she hired in what year was her career?
A year ago in November.
So like two thousand and fifteen?
No, no.
Or that.
No, no.
It would have been three years in October. It would have been three years in October.
Jason, when I go to that, who in the hell is the clerk responsible to? I mean, this was no secret.
Yeah.
This was going on, and I talked to you, and I'm, I'm going to keep it under control tonight. This is, it's, if we can just sit down like a bunch of grownups and get this damn thing fixed. But to keep blaming it on somebody, I mean, she was accountable to somebody, and frankly, she wasn't hella accountable. And I've been very critical of it. A lot of people know that. But I mean, this, this didn't happen overnight, and it wasn't just her.
No. But also in the future, just so people know, you can't bring your account information to council meeting. It is not right. I understand there was notes left and stuff, and it is difficult to get a hold of the city right now. But if you have the issue, and I agree, I mean, I'd be just as upset as you are right now.
Well, yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm paying about ten other people's water bills for the last year.
But you also have the option to come in and talk to me.
You are never here. Two hours a week, there in the middle of the day, you leave at noon.
But that's the thing also, she's not...
I'm not the same clerk.
Then we should have somebody hired.
That's why we just didn't.
Yeah.
You know, our water bill shouldn't have been estimated for over a year.
Oh, I agree.
Well, but, whether they're right or not, I, some of us are having a lot of trouble, and I, I think mine's pretty close. I'm not going to yell about the one house. I mean, the minimums weren't even billed. And, you know, one guy gets a bill for eleven dollars and forty-three cents for two months, and I'm in the grip, and I think it's close to right, and I get one for a hundred fifty-four. And, and I'm not billed minimum on my other property, and here we go again, we owe debt, we're not even billing minimum water bills out. I mean, this, like I said, we, somebody's got to get a handle on this, but I think we got a guy up there destroying it right now, but this has got to stop.
What's your hours going to be at city hall now, that you got a city clerk?
You know, whatever's in the ordinance, whatever's in the ordinance.
Well, it's very few hours. I don't know why they could be here for four to...
Change its whole time.
I just wonder. Whatever this ordinance has in it is what we have to go by in this.
It kind of sounds like we pick and choose what ordinance is we follow.
We did a resolution when I was...
Okay, well, whatever that was.
That resolution. We're just a lot of resolutions, just a lot of...
Well, what...
But there is a resolution there. I can't remember, but there is a resolution, and it was done.
Sam, last time I worked, it was... Every day.
We hired Mary for thirty-two hours a week. So Mary will be here thirty-two hours a week. That's what she's been hired to work, thirty-two hours a week. Correct? Yes, very good.
Uh, what I planned on doing is working Monday through Thursday, eight hours a day. And so, and I'm not shutting down for lunch, so if somebody needs to come in...
Well, nobody works in this town. I mean, there's nothing in this town, so you, obviously, anybody that works is not here until four or later. And we haven't had a city clerk.
Even if we could have an extra day, then maybe we could schedule it, that ten to six, or whatever, late, so you're here till six o'clock, something like that.
If you had one day, that would be great. You could come in late, because for years, I've not been a city clerk.
The other cool thing, though, is if you think about it, if she's here for thirty-two hours, you'll be able to catch on.
Well, yeah.
And ma, and make some arrangements.
Yeah, and that hasn't happened in five years.
And if somebody needs to see me after hours, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, well, basically, you just have to leave the phone message.
Or I could come in at nine to five. I mean, whatever, it's up to the council.
Yeah.
No, that's fine. It's, I figured it was going to be another four hours, or something.
No.
That was a thirty-two hour week job.
I'd like to point out, please, in the wintertime, those evening hours, like, you're out there on the road, seven o'clock.
The other thing, though, too, so in the, in the bad weather, is if she didn't have to be here till nine or ten, the roof would be clean, and she'd get a seat to get here. And obviously, everybody's got a nug of a kind heart, I think, that if there was a note on the door, or she left a voicemail going, due to inclement weather, I'm sorry, I had to leave.
Well, I've come in, I'm just coming up here in the first time in the last year.
That, again, is where we get all the way back to like where we were talking about the communication and being able to talk to somebody.
There's been a lot of times I wanted to come up here and talk to the clerk, but she wasn't here.
Yeah. Donna, if you're doing this for nothing, kudos to you. I don't even know why you would bother, but, because this is a mess, and I don't, you know?
And she didn't create it.
Yeah, it, it's a mess. I'm not blaming you. I'm blaming the city council for the last year, who, and some of them aren't seated here, whatever, I don't care. Stuff needs to be fixed.
And I guess what I'm gathering and what we're getting from the audience tonight is that we just need to start enforcing the ordinance book as it, as it reads.
Basically, for everybody. The leak one. I mean, there's no excuse for this. That's, that's ridiculous.
Well, yeah, but my bill was late, and you kind of turned me off right away.
I don't think anybody's been turned off, called, quiet some time.
I was just saying, in quite a few years.
I think that's the issue.
Something I would like to point out right now, we run into two of these curb stops which belong to the homeowner. We couldn't get shut off, and one fellow did finally dig down and got his shut off. So we may be looking, if we can't shut them off, need to dig them up and fix them, and dig them up at the homeowner's expense and fix them.
Well, they have to be.
And going a little farther with this, there's been an awful lot of neglect around here, we all know. Maybe those things should be turned every so often.
You'll be fixing a lot of them if you do that right now.
Well, they used to flush the hybrids and stuff. They haven't done that in a gazillion years.
Buddy's your turning expert. If you go, if a guy's paying his bill, I, I see no need to turn it because it's old as a bus. Because mine did it one time, Dave had to come off and, you know, I had to get a new shop on it. She broke, I paid for it, it's old. But if you're going to start turning those, and Buddy will even tell you, some of them will turn different directions, and if you get heavy on them, you can break them. But bottom line, it's the homeowner's problem.
Oh, yeah, but what I'm saying is, it may not be as easy to shut somebody off as we're sitting here talking about.
Well, I'm not saying we can't. This be money ahead to pay for somebody to come and fix it.
I think we need to get the process started.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And it all starts without getting a clerk hired, a competent clerk hired.
We have to, but the, the...
And our, our same man, unfortunately, we lost him. Nobody was put with him. These readings you're talking about is probably the first time that our new man read the meters.
It was.
And I don't know...
That old city clerk asked the mayor numerous times to have somebody go around with him and, and learn some of this stuff. He knew he was...
David asked when he got sick before he left, please, think about getting a replacement so that I can train him and I can help him.
But, yeah.
And the person in charge of that time failed him.
Yes. And I guess, I think that's part of the frustration of the whole core here, or group, I should say, is the frustration of how many times that we would try and come asking something, and it got tabled, or we'll look into that, or something, and it just...
Didn't get done.
Kind of dying. And so I think, you know, that, that shows a lot of the frustration that, and I'm sure even the council people that were on the council at the time, that maybe wanted to try and have something done, or follow through, or investigated a little bit more, and it maybe wasn't done in, in a timely fashion, or didn't get done at all, frustrated the council. So I think, you know, everybody's just a little on pins and needles all the way around. So, again, that goes to the, the communication. Now that we've got a new city clerk, she'll be here to answer the phone, she'll be here on a routine basis. We can leave a voicemail if it's something at night, she'll catch it in the morning. That's going to start off right off the bat with good communication. And she's already shown her willingness to, hey, if you can't get there, you know, before, I'll stick around, you know, for twenty minutes or half an hour, we'll try and help you out. So as long as we can all communicate and be nice.
Civility and communication.
Yep.
It's like a good marriage. You gotta be able, you can go to bed mad, but you've still got to be able to talk about it.
Exactly.
Well, you will be, you know, we have talked to the district attorney and the, and US attorney general, or state attorney general, but... Because this is either fraud or theft, what's been happening to us, and there's a lot of people in this town skating by not paying no water bills. So that's our whole, we've been here trying to get sort, I have nothing against her, two hours a, a day.
I've been here many, many more.
Yeah, you got, there's been many letters. Maybe you weren't even working here when she got, when she sent notes and letters with the water bills. But, either way, we're forty-two thousand.
My car was out there, you could come in.
Yeah, that black car's not there very often.
She's been putting in some time.
Been there lately. During the day.
Yeah.
So, you want to say something? Fire hydrants, it really should be replaced about twice a year. There's two reasons. It kind of cleans out the lines a little bit, and it's also a safety thing. That way, if you open them, you know that they're going to work if you have a fire. And they will stay. Yeah, we have got something down, but it won't work.
Yeah, but there's one that won't work now.
Yep.
And I requested that four years ago to get replaced.
So something to think about.
And it also makes water taste a little better when you're on the end of the line. It kind of gets a little brackish, and, and, I mean, we have different city people. Where I live, Jason, they crank that maybe off, and the water hammer about ripped the pipes out of my basement.
Yeah, I'm just going to watch that. Whoever's doing it's got to know not to do that.
My next question, Buddy, maybe you could show, help Gary or I, if someone was...
Turn it on slow, turn it on slow.
Yeah, you just turn it on slow and turn it off slow.
That's all you had to do. But we don't need any broken lines at this point in time.
No, because you could break main real quickly.
My guys have...
And they had done that when they flushed the hydrants a time or two.
I know this is kind of unlawful, again, but I appreciate everybody here and everybody being civil for the most part and talking, that's, that's what it's going to take to get this back. I talked last month about unity and getting everybody together. Got a lot of people, we've discussed, there's a lot of good resources that we have in this community that I don't think are being used. Guys like Buddy, guys that have been here and they have done all, all our jobs before. And I don't think that in the past, we've done a real good job of, of, we want to talk and seeking those people out for their advice and their... But these are the, that's awesome. Thanks, Buddy. I appreciate you coming up here tonight and speaking up. But that's...
I didn't do everything right here.
That's right.
Well, nobody, nobody expects anybody to do it all right.
And I'm not perfect like some people are. We, we are trying, and I think we're on the right, right track. So we have to be patient with that.
Just pay what your regular amount was. That way, when it does get figured out, you're not stuck with a couple hundred dollar bill. That's what I'm saying, just, she's going to have to work with the company that does the software, and with Gary, and find out what's going on with the meter deal.
It's very easy.
But until then, just pay a regular payment, and we will do everything we can to get this resolved.
And that's what, now that we have a city man again, that we'll read the meter every month, because we have been estimating. Gary will read it every month.
Is there an ordinance as to what, like, the timeframe? Because, I mean, if you guys are billing us on a minimum, a thousand gallons, you know, and that's...
That's what we need to get back.
The bill is supposed to be out by the first of the month.
First of the month?
And then, yeah.
By the fifteenth.
Yes. Regardless of what day it goes out, you have fifteen days to get it there.
But since the city guy just started doing it, he is trying to get it so that it is a group document, so that your house is going to be, just like the electric company, within five days of...
It'll be read by the same time every month. Yeah, and that's what we're shooting for, to get back on that, the way that reads.
And his list that he reads is not really up to date. People have moved and changed, and that's something else that we're going to have to go around and work with. I mean, this stuff takes a lot of time. If you do it right, get it straightened out.
Well, and I know, too, the other thing is that, and David even had said before, um, just knowing where the meters are at. It's like all the water meters aren't all on the east side of the house, or on the south side of the house, and if there's a brush or something like that that's grown up, then... And if there's a brush or something like that that's grown up, then he's still trying to hunt and pick to find some, so.
Well, then, you can ask either door.
Oh, I agree. But it's been really rough after.
Forty thousand gallons of water each, no excuse.
I do have to make corrections. According to your, ten days after getting a bill.
Four thousand new things going on. You got any new business? Uh, yeah, can I speak a little bit?
Yeah.
With Gary's help, we, I guess, repaired, called the fence down flagon. Uh, there's a couple areas of that that's really in bad shape. Uh, it'll probably get by for a while. But as we get some numbers in front of us, know where we're at financially, we need to start thinking about some infrastructure. There's an awful lot of things that, I think that fence was built in the seventies when they burned it off. Some of the posts are burned off, just normal, I mean, that's just one thing. There's, Joe Kirkham has mentioned things that we need to be doing down there. And I think the council is directly responsible for the sewer system. I probably read that somewhere. So when it gets cool, maybe someone's can go down there and look at things. And you don't expect Gary down there once ninety degrees doing really hard stuff. But we need to get a handle on our finances and try to work on our budget so we can get we need a slush fund for some of the, if we have some kind of a huge emergency, so we can be able to weather the storm, so to speak. And that's my speech for tonight. Thank you.
Bob, and that's, and that's what we're talking about, is if we get the Iowa Water Association to come in and do it, to tell us where our rates need to be, maybe we could put an estimate back, start putting stuff back.
They've, we contacted them about two or three times. They have helped us out. As a matter of fact, we even got a four thousand dollar credit from them. That was something from Wayback.
That's a good deal.
Two thousand eight was the last time that meter was read. And we just stumbled on it, asking other questions. And so, but like I say, we've got, we got to start looking at our infrastructure. And we can't fix it all in one year. But you have to start making some long-range plans, you know, and have the money to do it. I realize it's, it's easy to sit here and say this, but it's something we need to think about, consciously think about in the future. And I've told several people, I'm not for discontinuance. But if we don't get a handle on our finances, we may be driven there. So I think it behooves all of us to try to look at, and I appreciate you, what you're doing here, research, and that's what we got to do. Get it out there and talk about it, and try to make the best decisions we can.
Yeah, speaking of the fence, I talked to Greg Britton. He, uh, Dave asked him to put some panels up to close that fence in. Well, Greg wants to take his panels back. I don't know if he has yet.
He's already taken them.
He has taken, okay.
I know he's been in down there.
Okay, yeah. I say, he was going to take them. He said that cows will have access to the units, so that, that needs to be repaired ASAP.
At that point, you don't come to.
No, you can't have that.
Thankfully, it wasn't muddy, you know, they, they didn't do a lot of damage while they're in there. But that could change overnight if they rain.
They've gone ivy for around bone dry. Wouldn't that fence.
Yeah, they can't be in there regardless.
I just say we're lucky. It could have been a lot worse. Use Calgarde.
Don't remember. They're not his.
Dead.
The, uh, that fence, I'm sure, belongs to the city because it was condemned for that purpose. I don't think the half and half between property owners apply. And it's just been there forever, and it's kept to the end of its useful life, you know.
We got that on South Side. I don't do cut that. They actually cut clear out.
If I remember right, that was done during a project down there. The reason it was cut out.
I don't believe it was during the dredging. It's been before that.
I think it was before, I think it was when that road was redone, from what I understand.
No, I think it was before that.
Speaking of roads.
I did notice Gary's been working on it. I noticed, well, here, he's finally starting putting some patch down.
I noticed something the other day, and it made me remember because I had a pothole in the tomahawk a few years back, and it actually ripped my muffler off. And they said that they had just been notified of it. They had X amount of time to go fix it or whatever, and that it was getting repaired by the time I called in. So I was really worried when I saw those little pylons by the holes, thinking, oh, dear God, that's going, hey, people, there's a big bad hole here. So I, I guess I kind of pick and choose on maybe some of the, try and go find some of the deeper ones and let the little ones, because I see it looks like some of the little ones are getting filled. But I'm really worried about the bigger ones. It might cause somebody damage and have an issue.
That material was donated to us by Klein Farms, Eric and Bruce Klein.
That's.
And that's the expensive stuff that is not supposed to harden years past. We got the cheaper material that we had to use in a hurry. And you got to have a lot of people because it gets pretty hard to work with at camp.
Since we're talking streets and a lot discussing with Jason, I'm going to bring it up. And I'm not picking a fight. This city's got a lot of road use money given to it in the last few years. Does anybody have any idea what's happened to it, or how it was spent?
Can I make?
There's over twenty-six thousand put in, put in last year, last county, or last fiscal year.
Can I make a statement about road use? I would like for the other council people, anybody else that's interested, to drive around town and look at ash trees. We've got a bunch of large ash trees.
I'm not worried about trees right now. Before we drive vehicles.
If a limb falls out and hurts somebody, and those trees are dying slowly, between the curb and the street, we can use road use money to take them down, or whatever we have to do.
Bob, I guess the point Hunter and Megan, back, back in the day, I told you, if there was money available, I'd be the first guy sitting up here saying that we need to do something about the ash trees. But my question right now is, when I go over and look, there's a little over twenty-six thousand dollars in road use funds. And I understand some of it goes to city guys, some of it goes over here. I, I guess my question is, where is it? And because, and Jason's heard me talk about it, and you've heard me talk about it, if we, if we get, say, for instance, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year from the state, and let's figure we spend ten thousand of it each year, if we lay it back to carry around a balance like most cities do, we could bring Manette or somebody in here every three years and get these problems took care of. But frankly, nobody mad. And, but Jason and I were talking about, we, we went five years, and maybe when Ted gets this stuff done, I'll have a panel. We don't know where any of this road use money's at. And I, when I looked at what was done when Manette come in, at the time it had been paid, we did not have enough money in that road use account. So I don't know if some of it come from general fund. I assume they got paid. But, and I'm sorry, if I'm concerned about this stuff, I'm not going to apologize. That's a lot of money out there, and I must say, I, I'd like to know where some of it's at. And I've been home for quite a while, and I know some of you are damn mad at me for doing it. But I'm very concerned.
From talking to Ted today, by the end of the month, we should have balances for the road use tax, or the road use fund. And he's working on still going back and finding out where everything's going. He's, he said it's been a process because he hasn't had real good numbers.
Since we're talking, though, and let's just get in front of the camera, what did he tell you our general fund deficit was?
Seventy thousand, right?
Okay, thank you.
I think we don't know where that money went for the last three years, or four years.
Well, I, I'm not even saying where it went. I, I, I'll tell you, I'm almost speechless. And that's very unusual for me. It's, you look at this stuff, and you're just thinking, where did it go? And I don't think anybody knows. You look at a budget, and you see what's down there, and then you look what's actually spent on an AFR. It's twenty thousand dollars more. And, you know, we don't even know if the AFR numbers are right, to be damn honest about it.
And that's what, that's what he said, too, he's been dealing with, with numbers that aren't necessarily.
Well, see, the road uses, garbage.
Garbage numbers. But he's, he's trying to backtrack, he's going.
And that's one of the nicest guys at the state.
We've talked to him, Bob. I mean, you know, he's going through bank statements and everything else to try to find out where everything's at, what's where. He's, he said by the end of the month, we should have fund balances, so we know what's in the sewer fund, the water fund, the road use funds, and that's where it should be. Uh, I would discuss that before about Bob wanting ledgers. And I think once upon a time, you said when you started that you kept everything on a written ledger, and then we've kind of gone away from that. And we probably need to go back to doing both.
We have to.
We have to.
We have to.
The idea behind that is so that any citizen, whether the computer's up, down, or you know the password, anybody can come in here, and we can open a book and show them where we're at on these funds, our balances. And that's kind of the way it worked at Agency, wasn't it, Mary? And I'm very impressed with their system down there. Cindy was a great help, as well as Ted Nelson on getting this budget done. Hadn't been for those two people, we would have been in serious, serious trouble.
Well, then again, I'll be honest, I don't know how we got there. I don't. It was nothing nobody went aware of. And now I'm going to say right here to camera, it was nothing nobody at the city wasn't aware of, that that AFR wasn't done, and Bobby, you know that. And there's no reason for us to go there. And, and, yeah, I was going to come here and keep my mouth shut, but I'm really damn mad about it.
We're not going to let it happen again.
We come within about two weeks of going over the cliff.
Kevin, let me, when you asked the past mayor twice if he had everything, that's when I started digging into it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not even going to use the word I want to use. Everybody knows it, that the primary set up there, and let's just put it this way, we didn't quite get the straight of what was going on. And it almost cost us sixty-some thousand dollars in tax money. I guess all I'm trying to say is, and I meant, look at us tonight. We need to start communicating, but this Ponzi scheme has got to stop. We've got, the last number I had two weeks ago were five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in sewer debt, and we can't get our water bills collected. We're close to the cliff. And I'm willing to, I'm willing to incorporate, but it's going to cost me a lot of money, and I'm not going to be happy. So something's got to get done. This has been going way too damn long.
That's what we're trying to fix.
And you know, honestly, I grew up in this town. It's nothing like it used to be when I grew up here. And that's sad, it really is. And for the first time, I would consider selling my home and moving. But because of the state of this town, and the way that people sitting up there let it turn into with the Darrelite houses, and even the town's reputation, I can't sell my house for what I have in it. I would take a huge loss to leave this town. Exactly. Well, I would have to give my house away.
You just give it away.
You know? And it's just because nobody can figure out how to clean up. Somebody's burned down house, or somebody's, you know, Darrelite property, or even make them pay their darn water bill, or else kick their butts out of town.
Why do we have ten properties that's got million trees growing on one lot? I mean, is, is that a forest tree or what?
I know that it's been brought up before about the Darrelite houses and the cost. But also, it was brought up, and we informed previous mayors and previous council that if something you don't want to deal with, that you can call Waukato County and get the county health department involved, and they can come out and condemn something. And then you might be able to get grant money or fund money, excuse me, to help pay for tearing something down.
Collect your water bills. You'll take care of a lot of this.
Okay, indeed. We'll fix it. Get the right goal.
But I'm just saying, you know, because it is, it's a hard situation with the Darrelite houses, other than the ones that are just like totally empty and sitting in empty for years.
Yeah, I think we're getting all the nonsense out of here.
Just letting you know what you got to do.
Yeah, we do. Stretching this down out.
I have a question. Is the fire department, well, have you been paid? What would you pay me here for a while? Just do here this month.
No money to pay it.
There's no money to pay it? Well, that's going to be a big issue.
I have something else in new business that's easygoing. I really enjoyed before when, like, um, the library deputy attorney came up here and kind of gave us a report on what they were doing, where they were at, and stuff like that. If some of the cemetery and things like that, I think those would be kind of informative again if we can have.
They do those quarterly.
Cheryl does, and that would die later.
I think it's quarterly. So she'll be up here in a month.
But she, Cheryl's about the only one of those that's been doing it. So food for thought.
Thank you. Well, can I get the information to talk to the bank and stuff? Because. We were afraid this was going to happen. So, any fire tax still needs to be paid from the city. By law, right now, fire department doesn't have to give anything to the city. If they don't want to, it's not going. I mean, it's going to, but by law, they don't have to right now.
Yeah, we know that. We're hoping for motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Chisholm said to, by, affirm to adjourn.
Love or hate.
Whatever.
I'd like to thank the council for being so receptive to all the comments and stuff from everybody tonight, and giving everybody a chance to talk. It's greatly appreciated.
Yes.
We're trying.
Did we do all my favor?
Yeah.